Okay. Good afternoon and welcome to the Waterloo Finance Committee meeting. Roll call, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mrs. Jewen?
Here.
Motion for...
Motion to approve the agenda in the minutes of March 15, 2021, as proposed.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. But somebody take the preauthorizations and the other committee business.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Klein.
The first preauthorization is for the police department in an amount, an estimated shipping and handling of $6,841. It's for I cap liability insurance policy renewal for tri-county task force personnel. The second is for the sewer in an amount, an estimated shipping and handling of $6,363.73. It is for a new gas service for 4037 Kimball Lift Station. The third request is for sewer in an amount, an estimated shipping and handling of $5,984.63. It's for a new electrical service for 4037 Kimball Avenue Lift Station.
Second.
All, how about the other one?
Mr. Morrissey, was that a second?
He was asking you to...
Well, I'm waiting for other committee business. You want them all go together.
Well, I thought, okay, I thought we'd do the preauthorization separate. I'm sorry.
Okay, second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Time to take other committee business.
Sure. The, there's, number four is approve a request to recycle 6,230 pounds of damaged wire from the Riverfront Stadium fire with A-line iron metals in the amount of $3.45 per pound.
Second.
A second. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. And finally, under Bill's payment, as per Bill's payment dated March 22, 2021, in the amount of $1,284,026.96. And for Bill's payment dated March 29, 2021, in the amount of $3,161,763.68. Moved to receive, placed on file, and forward to the full council.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, could you please read the roll?
Mr. Bowzen?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Foyce?
Here.
Mr. Greider?
Here.
Mrs. Jewen?
Here.
All right, thank you. Oh, I guess we're doing a prayer moment of silence, huh? So if you would please join me in a moment of silence. All right, thank you. Next, we will have the pledge led by Councilmember Sharon Jewen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and the rest of the world.
All right, thank you.
Move approval of the agenda as proposed in the minutes of the March 15, 2021 regular session as approved, minutes of the March 22, 2021 work session as proposed, and minutes of the March 25, 2021 special meeting as proposed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you.
Motion to approve the consent agenda with the additions to 1A1 in the amount Bill's payment for March 22, 2021, in the amount of $1,284,026.96. And for March 29, 2021, in the amount of $3,161,763.68. Receive, approve, and place on file.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yeah.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Kelly, from there, what do we do?
We can just open up the next part of the agenda. No need for a motion or anything like that, kind of like a regular work session.
All right, thank you. So, all right, we're here this evening, and I want to thank everyone for being here, our council members, whether in person or in cyberspace. Thank you so much for being here. Like to thank our city staff members that are here as well, and really, big day for us. Probably about a few years ago, the question was asked around the city and around this community, if you had to take a look at Waterloo in five, 10, 20 years from now, what does that look like? And independent upon who you'd ask that question to, you would get that response. And we thought long and hard about how we can get to the point where we could have a vision for our future and how we can get our community members engaged and involved, and how can we take the collective voices of our city council and our staff to bring together a vision and a plan for us in the future. So as you know, in our last budget cycle, we did approve an allocation of dollars, and we went through an RFP process, and it was a pretty aggressive timeline to actually, from the start of this, in a COVID year, to actually get that planned on and started and moving forward. And through that selection process, you know, one company, great companies applied, but one company stood out, and that was de novo. I think if you take a look at what the word de novo means, where is that at? Well, I can't find it now, but I think it means a new, a start. And I think one of the, one of the favorite quotes I have, if you fail to plan and you plan to fail. So we are here this afternoon to talk about the collective voices of all of us and the citizens of Waterloo and the way that we want our 2030 to look. We had some pretty incredible co-chairs from different parts of the community, and we had Mr. Sherman Wise, and we had Mr. Tim Hurley as our co-chairs, along with Felicia and Sherman and Wendy. Thank you so much for all your help and support. But before I introduce our friends at de novo, I would like to invite former Mayor Tim Hurley to come up to the podium and share a couple comments about visioning and being a co-chair. So, Mr. Hurley, if you would please come forward and make some comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, good evening. Thank you, first of all, for taking your fifth Monday to do some great work, and to thank you for your service to the community. I'll disclose in a little bit the reason I said yes to Mayor's invitation to become involved with the 2030 Vision Plan. But I just wanted to not extort you, but basically to share with you how important I think this is and how important I think you should accept it. You councilmembers, probably outside of the mayor and the college of department heads, have a better idea than anyone in the city what it takes to make this enterprise go. And I can tell you, on my last day in office as mayor in 2010, I still had, not visions, but I still had unfoldings of the intricacies and of the skills and talents and input, the nuts and bolts it takes to run a city. So you have that perspective in your tactical, day-to-day sort of issues. You are probably just like me in that last week, still in awe a little bit once in a while of what it takes together to get things done. My perspective is my advantage, and that's this, that I'm 10 or 11 years out of office now. And it dawned on me in discussion with mayor a week or so ago, what that, what that separation and what that perspective means as I look back and could shed all of the minutia, all of the tactical kinds of things that go on every day that, where there's agreements and disagreements and all of those kind of things. But to look back and realize that when I sat in the council's chair and when I sat in the mayor's chair, I was a leader. And that isn't, it probably doesn't need to be said, but in a way it does. It isn't something that was in your oath of office, this idea of leadership, but it's intrinsic to what you're doing. What I beg of you, what I plead of you, is to give your full force and your full attention to this. You just got past the worst part of the year, the budget and everything that led up to that, and I hope you can take a collective breath. I think that you are, by that oath of office, you are invested in a way by your citizens, by the electorate that put you in office to take, get out of the tactical once in a while and look down the road. What do we want? And it'll come in a lot of forms, people, but I think you'll find that there are not as many differences in what you have, what your hopes and dreams are for the future of our beloved city. And that, I think you can rally around and be unanimous about. I'm, the reason I accepted the mayor's response is a little bit to make amends. When I took office, just two years prior to that, there was the Millennium Plan. It started around 1999 and came into fruition just after the turn of the century, and by the time I got into council's chair in 2002, I'm afraid it was already gathering dust. And certainly, when I took the mayor's seat in 2004, I just dusted it off. And I would implore you, a strategy, a vision, a plan that can be referenced and used, not just by yourselves, but by those who succeed you. You may not be around or in the chairs you're in as this comes to fruition, but you can say, by God, I was a leader. I was there at the start, and I can say I had a part of that. So let's not let any dust fall. Let's create a great plan. Others are doing it, good people. Others are doing it. I can name you any kinds of organizations, whether they're NGOs or nonprofits or for-profit businesses that do strategic plans and look ahead. And how good would it be if we create a plan that is in convergence with all of those that are out there? How great would it be if our plan pulled and led all the rest? So good luck to you. Thank you for, ahead of time, for the work that you're going to put into this. We need your thoughts and ideas and projections and input as much as anyone. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. And I didn't have to twist his arm that much, but if you take a look at Tim and you take a look at Sherman, different spectums, different genres, but both, as you said, share a collective vision for a better Waterloo. So we thank you so much for the stakeholders and the people you put us in contact with to make sure that we have a collective voice and, from people throughout this entire community. And we definitely know your love for Waterloo, so thank you very much. And as I mentioned, we had a selection process, and we were very fortunate to land on de novo, their excitement, their creativity, their ability to think outside of the box, their ability to engage multitudes of people within this community was something that really attracted us to them. And we're just so appreciative of the relationship that we're forming, and we are excited about the outcome, about what 2030 holds today. And without further ado, I want to just invite Jen Newman and Jill Mast and Ryan...
Schennfeld.
There we go. So much, so please, thank you, and it's your floor.
Thank you. I was sitting back there, and I could hear like the Bulls music in my head. I'm so excited listening to Mayor, former Mayor Hurley talk, and this is, this is one of many community meetings that we'll be working with the City of Waterloo, your constituents and citizens, to develop a plan that takes you into the future. So thank you. Thank you for choosing de novo. I'm Jen Newman. I'm the CEO of de novo. I love strategy. I love planning. I eat it for breakfast. I love talking politics. I love, not that kind of politics. I love doing this and hearing from communities because we believe at de novo that the strategy and the ideas and the brand identity all comes from within a community. No consultant can come in and tell you who you are. You are who you are. So I'm Jen Newman. With me is Jill Mast. She's Waterloo native. She's going to talk a little bit later. She's probably somehow related to half the people in this room. There are literally half a degree of separation between Jill and most people in Waterloo. And Ryan Schennfeld is with us today. He's working the AV. He, when you work with de novo, everybody on our team touches your project one way or another, but Ryan jumps up and volunteers for it. He assured me he'd be quiet, but I don't believe it for a second. It's like having your little brother with you at all times. So thank you again for choosing de novo. We are very excited to be here. We're going to start off with a bit of an update today, just tell you where we've been so far in this process, what we have left to do, and then I am hoping that we can jump into a great dialogue about ideas for this community. Like I said, the communities come from within. What we do is we find them. Sometimes we say, hey, did you think of it this way? Hey, did you think of it that way? And what we do is we pull those into a plan, and then we map your resources to them. We find the community partners, and we build the plan so that it can be achieved. And it is very common for a plan to go into a big binder and land on a shelf. Our goal is to build a plan that you will be so excited to, to bring to action. So thank you again. We're really excited. We think this is a community of opportunity here, and we're ready to dig in. So, go ahead, go to the next slide. We aren't here for today, right? You do your council work, department heads do the daily work. When you go to work, when you go to a council meeting where you're talking about budget, where you're talking about resolutions, you're doing the work of today. Today, you are not here for March 29th. You're here for March 29, 2030, 2040, but you're not here for March 29 of 2021. We are here because you guys give, frankly, all the dams, right? You guys are here for a reason, and I, and I don't just mean council. I'm here, the department heads who are giving their Monday evenings to be here. We want to hear your voices too. So we're here to think about the future and what is important to get done. So today is about ideas, all the ideas. Go ahead. A little, I referenced this a little bit. We don't come in and say, hey, you should do this. We have a client who calls it shooting on people. You should do this. Department heads, do you get this? You should do this. You know what you should do? You should do this. Council members, you probably get it too, from community members. You know what you should do? So we're not here to shit on you. We are here to listen and to glean your ideas. And I want to take a second just to say that this is a little bit momentous today because we haven't facilitated in person for a year now. So it feels really weird, and I feel a little naked without the mask, but I think you can hear me better. So our philosophies and our method behind community development are really to dig in. So Jill's going to jump in here in a minute and talk a little bit more about the process, but when you think today about where we are in 10 years and where we are as a community in 20 years, I really want you to bring to bear your experiences, your history here. Some of you have longer history here, some of you have shorter histories here. It all matters. There's no bad ideas today. We have, at de novo, we have what we call crap think every once in a while because sometimes you got to get the ideas out of the, the bad ideas out to find the good ideas. So I don't want anybody to hold back on that today. You can bring it to the table. It's all right. Nobody's going to, I mean, we might laugh a little bit, but really what it does is it frees us up to keep thinking creatively around what will make a difference for Waterloo. And this is really the mayor's challenge to us, too. He doesn't want to just come up with a few initiatives. He really is seeking the game-changing plan that 20 years from now, people look back and say, wow, what happened? This is amazing, you guys. What happened in Waterloo? Well, this happened in Waterloo. So with that, I want to, I want to introduce Jill Mast, who's going to talk a little bit about the goal we were given and what we've done to date. And I'll turn it over to you.
Ditch my mask, too. Hi, everybody. I'm Jill Mast, as Jen mentioned. Thank you very much for having us here tonight. As Jen mentioned, I wanted to talk about the goal, and this isn't our goal, and these aren't, this isn't your goals that we're going to be defining, but our goal of the process is on screen here, and I'm going to read it. It's to discover and articulate a community vision that will propel Waterloo forward. And I think what's really important about that, Jen alluded to it earlier, is that communities that come to us that say, we want to be Austin, Texas, or we want to be Des Moines, those, those aren't the, that's, that's not what we do. You're not Austin, Texas. You're Waterloo, and you have some really great things here. So our job is to discover what this community is, what it wants, to articulate that, and then put it into this vision process. And, and our whole goal is to propel Waterloo forward. We want to attract business. We want to attract people. We want people to come here to visit, to live. And so this is the goal of this process. Within this process, we will then define goals of the vision plan. Go ahead, Ryan. And it all starts and ends, frankly, with listening. And, you know, we approach this to, we seek first to understand. So we don't prescribe to you who you are. We tell you back what we hear and what we kind of think about what we hear and what that might become, but really, our entire process is built around listening in various ways. So I wanted to talk a little bit about what we've done and what we will be doing. So we kicked off the process with what we call a stakeholder work session. Unfortunately, we had to do it via Zoom since it was 2020, 2021, but what we were able to do on Zoom is we had about 50 people, and they ranged from community members and CEOs, nonprofits. It was a big cross-section of your community that came together and gave us three hours that seemed, we actually were worried that it might seem to drag a little bit, and it flew by. We had fantastic discussion, and people really provided ideas and thinking and thoughtful responses. And what we, so that was the first session that we had, and we call those community partners. So people that are probably going to be involved in executing this vision plan. After the stakeholder work session, we deployed the community survey. That's the one that's going on right now. I'm sure you've seen it. I hope you've taken it. We really encourage you to take it if you haven't, to share it with your departments, to share it on your personal social media. We have about 2,000 responses now, which is an excellent participation rate. We'd love to get to 2,500 by Wednesday when we close it at the end of the day. So if you would help us out by sharing that and participating, that would be fantastic. The point of the community survey is to give, give anybody in the community and actually people outside of the community, it's not limited to them, they have just, if they're not a resident, they have slightly different questions. But we want to give them an opportunity to tell us what they love about Waterloo, to tell us what's top of mind. We try and look for themes that develop. And then we also give people ideas. If you have one wish for Waterloo, what is it? And we get varied responses from, you know, from a new restaurant to huge things with parks. I mean, we get a gamut, you know, runs the gamut, but it gives people an opportunity to participate and provide their ideas. Tonight, we're doing the council and department, department head work session. We're excited to hear from you. And then we are also doing the Spark Waterloo event. The best way to describe Spark Waterloo is like a TEDx for communities. And so at the end of the survey, and then some additional promotion after the survey closes, we are inviting people to go online to our Spark forum and provide either their Waterloo story or a big idea that they'd like to share. And then on May 13, we're having an event at the amphitheater, be outside, socially distanced and safe, but we're going to pick 10 presenters to tell their stories or present their ideas. They don't win anything. We do guarantee applause, but it's really an idea to come up with crazy ideas, big ideas, things that maybe you wouldn't think are doable, and share them. It's a community building event, and it's, it's a lot of fun. So we encourage you to mark your calendars. There will be more information forthcoming too on that. After the Spark event, we're going to be doing a number of, well, and actually between now and the Spark event, a number of small group interviews and work sessions with some other individuals and groups. And then after that, we take everything that we've learned, everything that we've heard, and that's when we start distilling things down to help identify your goals and your, and how we achieve those goals, and that's when we develop the vision and present you the final plan. So it's ambitious. It's a quick timeline. There's challenges with COVID, but we are so excited to be working with you and be here and be here tonight, and we really appreciate your participation. So I'll go back to you, Jen.
Thanks, Jill. I was, I was told that because this is a public meeting, that we have to be speaking into the microphone so everything can be recorded. I cannot tell you how hard it is for me not to interrupt Jill when she's talking. So you guys, I want you to feel free to interrupt me while I'm talking, and I know that we've got department heads back there that don't have mics. Ryan will move if you want, or just come up here and say, I've got something to say. I will share this mic with you. And when we have opportunities for, for sharing ideas, I really, really, really hope that you'll be able to, be able to share your thoughts and ideas too. So moving that so we can, there you go. There's the microphone. Told you he wouldn't be quiet. All right. Okay. So from that community partners session that we had, so 50 people on a Zoom call, and I have to say that everybody figured out the technology so fast. There were people using the raise hand option, the clapping emojis. Everybody was really respectful, and everybody was really participative. It was really great. And like Jill said, it was a really great cross-section of the community, and that's so important because when you do a plan like this, what you want to do is you want to identify these big projects and goals, and you don't want them to all be solely the city's responsibility, right? There might be outside funding that has to be found. There might be community partners that lead some of these. These are not, any community that sort of has that, we're going to, we're going to do 10 big projects and we're going to do it alone, is really destined to fail when they do things like that. It really does take a community, and it's really... It really does take a community and it's really the, the most effective way to do it. But you need their ideas and you need their buy-in to do that. So it was a really productive session and I wanted to share the emerging themes that came out of it. So to shorten things up today, because we had 15 themes that came out of it, I put it into four buckets. Some of these cross buckets a little bit. But, you know, with communications, it was really clear from that group that there is a lot of pride in this community, but it, it kind of gets over, over, overheard, not overheard. It, it gets buried a little bit. So, you know, one of our theories at De novo is that you've got people who are really happy to live in your community. And you've got a couple of people who aren't so happy to live in the community. And you've got a lot of people in the middle who are fine. You know, I call them the complacent middle. Too much of this, too much of that, and they move directions. So what we want to do is we do want to find the people who really care about living in Waterloo, who really love Waterloo. It's fine if they have things about Waterloo they want to change. It's fine if they, if they have passion for that. But as long as they love Waterloo, that's what matters. We want to find those people and we want to be able to amplify that. I call them the super fans. So, and on the other hand, you have people who maybe don't love living in Waterloo. And there, there's not as many of those as you think. They're just, they're just kind of loud. So our goal is to identify the people who really want to be involved in moving Waterloo forward and getting them involved in this process. So that's part of why we do the survey the way we do as well. So communications was a resounding theme. We had 62 different ideas come out of this session. So distilling it down just to 15 ideas was, or 15 themes was a little difficult. But developing a platform for city communications to reach and engage residents, but also developing a campaign to promote what is great about Waterloo to both the internal and the external audiences. Next slide. Second theme that emerged would be workforce barriers. Studying and addressing transportation barriers for the workforce, developing programs to increase access to capital for home buyers, ensuring a welcome and inclusive community, and developing programs that attract and incentivize a strong workforce across all employers and industries. I have to say that you guys are right in line with what every community in Iowa and the Midwest for that matter, is struggling with right now. So getting out ahead of that in your planning process is going to be really important. Development and enhancements in the community. So developing more opportunities for unique public art. And I would hazard a guess, you have some amazing artists in this community who have some great opinions about this. Incentivizing and encouraging businesses to invest and develop in downtown. Your downtown is, is your core. If you don't develop your down, if you don't invest in your downtown, you've got a donut with a, and with a big hole in the middle. So it's really important that that's front and center. Studying planned changes and improvements and benchmarking those against modern practices to make sure that your long-term plans are feasible. And developing recreation improvements. Usage and engagement with the riverfront area came up time and time again. All right. And then neighborhoods. This one came up a lot specifically with identifying the districts within the community. And there was a lot of talk about celebrating what makes them unique, but also celebrating how they work together. Incentivizing property owners and landlords to responsibly oversee and invest in their properties. Identifying elevating and connecting to celebrate our neighborhoods and really establishing and improving the gateways to the city and the neighborhoods. So those are the emerging themes that came out. The thing that kind of gets lost in this, and I just want to make note of it because I found it to be unique among the communities that I, we've worked with. So youth came up time and time again of the 62 ideas that were presented. So many of them connected back to youth being your future workforce. And I just, I have to tell you, I haven't really seen that to the level that we saw in this, in this session in other communities. This community has a special commitment to youth that I think is a differentiator for you. And, and I hope that that comes out in the goals. It'll be interesting to see where it comes out in the goals and, and what that means. But, you know, things like the career center and just thinking about future workforce, but also connecting students to mentors. It just, it came up time and time again. And I just, it was interesting. I've never seen it to that level before. And I think that that's pretty amazing. Okay. So go ahead and go to the next one here.
Jen? Can I just clarify? You've got the overarching themes there. Is part of your plan then to have objectives? And then do you assign responsibility for the objectives as well as part of your plan?
Well, I don't quite have the power to assign the objective.
Well, a group that maybe oversees it, not necessarily does it.
So the, the most effective way to do this is to identify those big, and the way this was specifically structured in, in our RFP was to identify the big projects that meet the city's goals. So project can be a kind of a scary word. It doesn't necessarily have to mean a bridge or something like that. But a defined pro, project. So an idea that came out in the RFP, it may or may not end up being this, was like eight ideas in eight years, an eight by eight campaign or plan. And those eight projects, if we went with something like that, each project would have, you could think of the city as a general manager in a way, right? Like they're kind of GMing the project, but you're going to have multiple community partners who are involved in it. And it is our job to help you identify who those are and help you get their buy-in to it. And that's why we have that community partners meeting. And we didn't, we certainly didn't meet with every single nonprofit yet in this community. There are lots of opportunities for them to get involved yet in this process. But as those ideas are developed, bringing them in so that it is not just the city of Waterloo implementing these projects, that wouldn't be either feasible or probably financially responsible to do so.
But it will also be specific goals included in it, right?
There will be specific goals and there will be specific groups that are responsible for those goals.
Thank you.
And I was talking to another facilitator this morning and, and we were talking about a plan in Cedar Rapids that happened in the early to mid 2000s. And it was kind of our version of the millennium plan. And, and then our flood hit, right? 2008. And the thing is, is we'd done enough work at that point in time that we had a lot of ideas that were shovel ready. And that was really important. And I think it's what hap, or part of why Cedar Rapids has been able to recover to the degree they have because they had a plan in place. And as the mayor said earlier, if you failed a plan, or if you, if you failed a plan, you plan to fail. So some of this is just getting ready for the next big step. But also when you have a plan and you're handed a pandemic or you're handed, you know, in our case, a derecho last fall, it gives you something to center on. It gives you something to get refocused on. And rather than just saying, well, what should we do next? So it was an interesting conversation this morning and very timely.
And the timing is perfect too. When you take a look at what's happening on the federal level from the infrastructure, I see there's a number of these that talk about housing and neighborhood development. And you take a look at potential infrastructure package that includes housing. So it's the perfect time to be doing what we're doing so that we can tie it into the larger picture and make some of these things happen.
It is interesting from a timing perspective as, as we are trying to figure out how the CARES Act funding is going to impact communities, when communities that have a plan to move forward with that are, are going to be in a better position frankly. So the timing, although somewhat accidental, is, is also perfect.
Intentional.
Okay. All right. You can go to the next slide. All right. So we have talked enough here. What I'd like you guys to do, I think there were directions for, we're going to use some software that just allows us to start sharing some ideas and they'll show up there on the screen. And hopefully we'll be able to read them. I will, I'll keep reading them out loud as they come to in case they, in case we can't read them. But grab your phone or your device. So if you're using a phone, so where, where it says recipient, treat 22333 like it's a phone number. And this is for, I really want the department heads to do this too. So, so put that in. And then my name has a weird German spelling. It's Jen Newman, J E N N E U M A N N 602. I never had to spell my maiden name, by the way. So that is the word that you will text to 22333.
Jen, I'll submit them up there already.
Oh, good. Okay. Anybody get a error message or it doesn't say that you've entered Jen Newman's? Okay. All right. So Ryan's going to switch screens here over to that. And what I would, whoa, were we activated? Okay.
We're activated and they're already submitting.
All right. So what can you imagine that will make Waterloo the community of opportunity for future residents? So think 10 and 20 years out. What can, what can you imagine that will make people choose Waterloo? That will say, that's the community where I can succeed, where my kids can succeed, where my business can succeed. That's the community of opportunity for me. So we've already got one in there. Construct new and exciting outdoor aquatic facilities. Also, guys, I'm very comfortable with awkward silence. Not really. Broadband benefits.
I'm confused. Nothing's showing up on my phone.
It won't show up on your phone. It shows up up there. So increased fiber capacity. Great place to start a business, jobs, training, quality of life and broadband. Fair, equitable and affordable housing projects. So think, be thinking about like, so we can say these things, fair, equitable and affordable housing. Think about the project that brings that to life. So fiber capacity is definitely one that is coming up. Cohesiveness between schools, business and city government to draw in young people. Fiber, resilient infrastructure. Yep. Very important in the Midwest. Modern, great schools. Control violent crime. Okay. So Ryan suggested I just read the question again. So what can you imagine that you can do as a community that will make Waterloo the community of opportunity? So broadband is clearly a need. Addressing food deserts, childcare deserts and transportation deserts. Job opportunities for young people. So, so let me, so housing opportunities has come up a couple of times. So I'm going to have Ryan hold it here for a minute. When you think about what those housing opportunities might look like that are different than what you have now, what comes to mind? It doesn't, you can say it out loud or you can type it in there too.
So working with young people and being a younger person, dense housing that is accessible to lots of things, whether it's downtown or entertainment venues or public transportation or jobs. You know, young, single people or young couples are more willing and more likely to live in denser housing where they can have a sense of community that maybe is a building rather than spread out in a, in the traditional neighborhood setting that we have a lot of in Waterloo, which is really good. But for the young people just starting out, affordable denser housing is one of the things that I've heard time and time again.
Okay. Let's go up, see what we've got here. Broadband, broadband. Strong support for locally owned business. Let's, um, let's stop there for one second here. Show of thumbs up, thumbs down. Do you think that you've got good support for locally owned businesses right now? You can also do this if you're just like, I don't, maybe sort of. Okay. You kind of like that? Ups, down? Okay. Just kind of getting a feel for, for where everybody stands on some of these things. Broadband, that one keeps coming up, keeps coming up. I'm guessing that everybody's like, yes, we need more broadband. Is there a specific, is there a specific project that would increase that? That's either?
Smart cities.
Smart cities.
We have a Magellan plan that we're working on that totally incorporates installation and running our own utility. And I think that's what we need to do.
Okay. All right. You can scroll down a little bit and let's see if we're amenities. Let's stop on new businesses for a second here. So communities talk a lot about manufacturing 4.0 right now and there's lots of funding out there for, for that. When you think about new businesses, communities like to think about, what are the complementary businesses to some of your major industry that you have here right now? So when you think about new businesses and expansions of businesses here, are there thoughts on, on sort of those coordinating or complementary businesses to what you have right now?
I think one of the, one of the main things that I see, I'm an instructor. And one of the main things that I see happening is, is even though there are businesses out there, one of the big issues that they have is, is individuals with the proper skill sets to be able to hire them and, you know, use them as employees, the skill sets necessary to do the new jobs.
Jen? You mentioned manufacturing 4.0. Just to say, you know, there's a start there. There's an inception point over at the tech works where the university, Hawkeye Community College, Waterloo Community Schools, the tech works itself are very much concentrating on manufacturing 4.0. And we would see that, building that organization as a regional center for those types of efforts and studies.
Okay. So tech.
The only reason I mention it is, is it's there and it will need help.
Okay. So Tech Works becomes a regional center of excellence for manufacturing 4.0?
Yes.
All right. Neighborhoods. Is municipal broadband utility, is that, that's not part of the Magellan plan, I assume?
That is part.
It is part of it. Okay.
Yeah. The, the smart city concept and the Magellan plan are all tied together.
Okay. All right. Retail opportunities destination in South Waterloo, North Waterloo. So it's, it's, it's interesting when we talk about retail opportunities because retail has changed so very much in, in communities. Does, whether it's the person who submitted that one or not, be thinking about, because we're going to kind of talk about like what's next with this? How do we take these and make these into big ideas? What that, what those unique retail opportunities might be that, that will succeed in today's retail environment?
Do you want a response for that or you just?
If you want to respond now, mayor, you go right ahead.
Well, I can wait if you.
I think there was some more at the bottom that I didn't. Well, there was something about people working together.
Go down a little bit more. I think that was a little bit more. Residents that respect each other and work to get along.
Yeah.
So when we say that, these are things that we want, right? These are things that we want in our community. So when we think about how things like that translate into a project or into a goal, that's kind of what we're here to do today. So how can we, you know, is there an idea that we can begin to kind of throw into the mix
I can tell there's a lot being submitted because it's forcing me up way quicker than I.
But really, how do we get there, right? So the thing that makes planning interesting is that everybody has a lot of the same ideas, right? This is, you know, we want, let's say, universal pre-kindergarten kind of thing. But the, the ideas that come up around it, that's where you start to deploy some creativity, and that's where you have the opportunity to do things differently than other communities. So, um, so I wanna, we went to the slide, and I'm gonna make you go back. And we can scroll back if you wanna go over any of them, but let's think a little bit about some of the things that showed up there. So it sounds to me like broadband might be in progress, right? Or...
There's still a part that the community is going to have to play with this as well, so.
Okay.
But we've started the process of looking at this.
That one came up, that's one of the top ones that came up, I would say. And I think the workforce gap, especially as jobs need a higher level of training for them, has come up over and over again. So go back up to the charter school downtown, downtown charter school stem. So thinking about schools in general, and how they're addressing this workforce shortage. And you guys have the Career Center, which, we're in Cedar Rapids District, and like, I have to tell you, you're kinda the envy of the state with your Career Center, especially with the grant you guys just got. Let's talk a little bit about how we turn even more opportunity, how we turn things like the Career Center and more opportunities. Are there other things that would come alongside something like a Career Center that would give more kids more opportunities for training that they, that keeps them here as well?
I can, I'd like to speak to that a little bit if I could. You know, that's been one of my visions, dreams, or whatever, for years now, is to actually have another training center. We have Hawkeye, we have the Tech Works, we have the Adult Learning Center where I work at. But there's still a shortage of people that have the skill sets necessary. So for me, it's like, how can we set up a training center on the north end of Waterloo to reach some of those individuals that are not being reached for training?
In a way, it's almost like a, a pre-training, in a way. It's, it's getting them the, the basic skills they need to enter into one of these other programs.
Yes, exactly.
Any other thoughts on that?
This charter school thing comes from building the base. You wanna keep young couples here, young people, you have to have a high performance goal that attracts young people to stay here and, you know, build a family too. So having a high performance stem school, you know, is very attractive in the communities across the country that are looking to gain, maintain some sort of, you know, base of young people. And that's the very common thing, that you're trying to keep young people in the city, you keep intellectual capital here. You have to have that, and they're all, and they all should be in the downtown area, because you have a family, you don't need as much space, and you don't want them migrating out of the communities, so there has to be something to keep here, and the schools are the basis for it. It's the first thing a family does.
Harkening back to that community partners session that we had, and how often youth came up, and, and how different that, that really is. And maybe you guys don't even know how different it is, because you're here, and you look at your world through what your Waterloo lenses, but like, stepping out and working with other communities, it's almost taken for granted in many ways, but also just not focused on to this level. And so I think that that is something that could get even more traction and, and more commitment to that, especially as it results, as it, as it speaks to training your future workforce, and keeping people here, and attracting younger families. Let's see. Let's, let's go back to that retail section. I think the mayor said he was gonna save his comments there for a moment. So retail's really interesting, right? You can say, we want, we wanna revitalize our mall, but that's not always the, the most successful way to, to incentivize retail. So like, I would love to hear your thoughts on that, and then let's maybe have a discussion on, on what retail looks like 10 and 20 years from now.
So Waterloo has been very fortunate at our Crossroads Mall to have anchor stores. You know, we had the Dillers, the J C Penney's, the Sears. We, we had our mall that's full of anchors. But once, you know, in the last five or six years, when a lot of those anchors started going bankrupt, or losing money, Waterloo was an easy target for those places to close up shop while, you know, remaining in some other targeted areas. So I think we need to take a look overall. We had talked last week, or a week before, about, you know, the 218 corridor, and how we're going to pull some pieces together. And I've been talking to, you know, a mall representative, and talking to Wendy and Noel about seeing how we could create that synergy, but, and, and bring that back, because we have, will have one of the most outstanding tourist attractions in that area, with the water park and Lost Island. So that's going to be a natural to attraction. So we need to be strategic, and figure out how we can tap into that energy to create some opportunity in that corridor. But it also shouldn't just rest there. We also have enough room and enough population and economy to take a look at, you know, the north side of the community as well. You know, there's a freshness and newness over in the North Crossing area, where we could create some equitable, equitable opportunity there with the incredible things that are happening now, but also going to be happening over the course of that year. So we need to be strategic about becoming a retail regional location, and we have enough population. So I just believe that strategy needs to be in place, to be able to make sure we maximize upon these opportunities, because we need it. We shouldn't have to travel. You know, it used to be if you lived on one side of town, you had to travel all the way over to the other side of town to just get a pair of jeans. Now, it makes no difference what side, it's very limited with regards to retail, and that keeps people, that brings people. So we need to really take a hard look at how we're going to strategically support the enhancement of retail for this city.
You know, economists spend a lot of time trying to predict what retail's gonna look like in 10 and 20 years. And it's really, it's really gonna be a mix, and the way retail is moving is that, that mix of lifestyle and what you need, and what you, what you can get right away, versus what you're willing to wait two days for, or in recent cases, two weeks for, from Amazon. And developing, developing around that, instead of trying to be everything to everyone. So are there thoughts on, on how those areas that you've currently got, that can use some redevelopment as anchors, as anchors start to pull out? Thoughts on how those areas can better serve the, the neighborhoods and tourists as you, as you develop, as you develop these destinations 10 and 20 years from now?
I think the, the big thing, and the mall is, is in my board, is that, I mean, Amazon has convenience, right? You, you go on, it has your credit card already there, and you can just order what, all the things you need, and it'll be here in two days, or two weeks, or whenever. So if I can do that for diapers, for my six-month-old, I can do that. But if I can go to a unique place that is unique to Waterloo, that offers something special, that might not be able to compete with Amazon prices simply because of economies of scale, but provides me with something unique to what Waterloo is, to what my community is, I think that is a way that we can make retail, retail revitalized, because it's a unique experience that you are getting because you are here. It's not just cookie cutter clothing store, or cookie cutter bookseller. It is something unique and special that is intimately tied in with the community.
I would agree with my colleague. I'm currently finishing up walking the entire city, and knocking on the door of every single voter. And what I see on their porches is an awful lot of Amazon. I, I see that. I see signs, I mean, they're so used to Amazon, it's, they have specific places they want the packages put, and they put out little Christmas things I saw at Christmas time for the people that apparently come all the time. So I agree with my colleague. It has to be really unique and clever, and it's gotta just scream Waterloo.
That goes back...
Can?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Pat Morrissey. I'm on Zoom.
We've got you.
Can you hear me okay?
We sure can.
Okay. Okay, so what you're asking for, starting out from when you start talking, you're asking for some ideas on things that we believe should be our future. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So are you ready? Because I have a number of things right here that I would like to add, if that's possible to do that right now.
Sure is. Go ahead.
Okay. First of all, downtown Waterloo needs to have Schmidt. That needs to be passed, and be put forward, and be part of the future of Waterloo. And that would include a city taxpayer buy-in, or that the city is going to pay Main Street, and it should be upwards of $200,000 per year. Downtown Waterloo needs to have free downtown parking, and that's been discussed forever. Next, we need to have, we have so many historic buildings, and we continually tear down our history. We need to have a separate department that is, that becomes a city department, having its own budget, that is the Historic Preservation Department, being housed at someplace, and I would say, the Historic Dunsmore House. Next, we need to have Fifth and Sixth Streets, two-way streets, and included in that would be the city buy-in to turn Mount Moriah at the end of East Fifth Street into a historic property, and making it something like, which has been proposed in the past, a city art gallery, museum, and possible playhouse. Next, is that there needs to be a moratorium on development in the south side of Waterloo, in favor of a 10-year development of the north side of Waterloo, with no exceptions. Next, there needs to be an outdoor water and sports center, and there have been suggestions in the past that that could be something at the Cattle Congress, and the grounds there. Next, there needs to be curb and gutter systems, that, that infrastructure that is given to all parts of Waterloo, that are without right now, but that would include more than just new development areas that go up. Next, I agree, we need to have a public utility with broadband. Next, we need to have a standalone city, city housing program, and I believe that that can be accomplished using the 1.8 million in homelessness funds. Next, we need to have a permanent warming center for the homeless, or those that are without shelter in the cold months, specifically December, January, February, and maybe even into March of every year. Next, we need to have a dedicated city employee group that handles substance abuse, domestic issues, mental health issues, dependent care issues, that are called, that are called by the police department, where the police department does not have, I mean, there's no reason for the police to be involved, but that should be a separate unit, and have their own separate budgets, apart from the police. Next, we need to bring Costco into Waterloo, Iowa. Next, we need to have three to six more flights coming into Waterloo with two more airline providers. Next, we need to concentrate on preventive maintenance, rather than just build and not provide sufficient funds for that preventive maintenance. Next, we need to set a goal of a population growth to 90,000 people by either 2040 or 2050. Next, we need to set up a vote for local option sales tax, changes, moving 50% of it to general revenue, and to provide for that to be used during general revenue budget times. Next, we need to move the mayoral term to four years, unless that mayor term, or mayor becomes a part-time position. Well, it still would be four years. Next, we need to change the two council-at-large positions now to a council-at-large east side, and council-at-large west side, with the appropriate border delineations. And finally, we need to invite and seek out a developer who will build and have a heft processing plant to build in Waterloo, in our ag sessions, and make it so that it can be converted to a marijuana operation, when full medical marijuana and recreational marijuana is improved by this legislature, or by a state legislature, with the, which is showing that the way it's going is probably gonna have to be till 2040, or 2050.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have writer's cramp now. I appreciate all those ideas. Is there anything within that, that anybody wanted to pull out and, and add to, or, or talk about?
So I will say, in terms of infrastructure, if you own a car in Waterloo, which, which most people do, it's fairly easy to get from...
If you own a, I'm sorry, own a...
If you own a car.
Okay.
It's very easy to get from place to place. But if I wanted to bike to even the Hy-Vee, that's not terribly far from my house, that's not necessarily easy to do. And it's difficult to move across the city in other modes of transportation, whether that's public transportation, or people-powered transportation, safely and effectively in a lot of places. And so I think if we want to continue to be a blue zone city, making the city accessible to multiple modes of transportation is key.
Okay. Okay.
The one thing that Mr. Morrissey said that I totally support is, is a more vibrant downtown. And I think, as you mentioned, if we don't have a vibrant downtown, we've gotta donut with a hole. And so I think we all need, certainly there's different methods and beliefs on how we can make it more vibrant. But when you were talking about retail, my big wish is a Trader Joe's, you know, so... And that, to me, is some of the kind of unique retail places that, that we need to attract to the city. So maybe we could get it downtown.
And it's difficult to move across the city in other modes of transportation, whether that's public transportation or people-powered transportation safely and effectively in a lot of places. And so I think if we want to continue to be a blue zone city, making the city accessible to multiple modes of transportation is key.
The one thing that Mr. Morrissey said that I totally support is a more vibrant downtown. And I think as you mentioned, if we don't have a vibrant downtown, we've got to donut with a hole. And so I think we all need, certainly there's different methods and beliefs on how we can make it more vibrant. But when you were talking about retail, my big wish is a Trader Joe's, you know, so. And that to me is some of the kind of unique retail places that we need to attract to the city. So maybe we could get it downtown.
I once started a Facebook group to try to bring Trader Joe's to Cedar Rapids and I'm actually surprised they didn't take a restraining order out on me. So they're difficult and they look at their MSAs and they make their decisions and.
I know, I know. But I still want one. Maybe we could start our own version.
Well, and that's interesting that you say that because there are communities certainly that are taking that tactic that they can pool together resources and do things like that and create that experience that, you know, as Councilwoman Klein said, screams Waterloo, but at the same time offers, it's kind of a nod to that type of shopping experience. So, yeah.
Well, Cedar Falls is starting a co-op that I think might eventually get to close to a Trader Joe's kind of concept and we need to be working very closely with them.
Going a little off sidetrack, so we have really good schools and I know because I work in one of them and I work alongside really good people from the career center to the high school where I work at and all the way down. But what I know for young families is that we have a very large childcare gap from the moment a child is born until they're five and can enter the school system. We don't have enough places for them to go. And that keeps people at home, predominantly moms at home, which leaves part of our workforce not engaged. And so I really think that we need to focus on that zero-to-five gap. We also know, being a wonderful diverse community, that there are maternal health rates that are lower for some groups and we should work on lifting up and erasing those inequities in our community because they do exist. So really focusing on those early years so that we can attract young families because we do have great schools and we have great post-secondary options, whether it's Hawkeye or you and I right next door. But that zero-to-five, when families are most vulnerable and most in need of support, we don't have, and we're not the only ones, but we are missing that right now.
You're definitely not the only ones. And you do have a pretty good group here with the Black Hawk Childcare Coalition that's doing a lot of work in that. I don't know the answer to this question. Do you have downtown childcare center right now?
Just at the YWCA is, I think, the only place that I'm aware of.
I think the Van Gie Miller Center has things for employees, but I don't think it's open to the larger public.
Yeah.
So I don't think there's any, no. And if you look at where there are childcare deserts, it's downtown and then it extends north and south radiating out from there.
If I can add, you know, we got to, you know, one, it's probably a big picture idea, but it's, I don't know what type of strategy would have to be put together. But, you know, we were recently, based upon metrics, the worst place for African-Americans to live. And that is a title that none of us here want, taking a look at data and metrics. But we need to make sure that we are continuing to move in the direction of being a more inclusive community with lofty goals to make sure that everyone is included in this economy. So we definitely have to do that. So, you know, 20 years from now, we need to be the first place that immigrants, African-Americans would want to come and can thrive when they get here.
And I'd like to just add to that, ever since that first report came out, the community was just shocked and really upset with that designation. So a lot of different groups are working to address that. We just need to make sure the groups are working together and coordinating their activities and that takes some effort. But I also want to go the next step. When we're talking about community of opportunity, I think City Hall has got to be at the center of a lot of that. And Mayor Hart has really started a lot of reorganization within City Hall and I commend him for that and I think it's had good effects. We need to continue that. And I will say that one of my top goals is a city administrator and I'm not big on a city manager, but something, some person that is specifically trained and that can carry the ball when we have a mayor or council turnover, that there's a continuity that continues the leadership. Because I think the leadership at City Hall, and we're very blessed to have good leadership right now, but to make sure it continues to offer that community of opportunity.
Of course.
Not tonight.
Do you want?
So we'll let Mr. Pearson speak, but tonight's work session is only for, and I know only for staff and council, because this is the only time we'll have these folks together. But we'll let you get a couple minutes in just because of the star you are. But this is only for, this session is only for council and staff. We have other community sessions for different venues for people to participate.
Understood. I didn't even have a slide clue that was the process.
Huh?
I said, I didn't know that was the process. I just was trying to fit in. Okay, real quick, I think one of the things for Black Waterloo is that we don't have resources to develop our resources. So what that means, for example, we don't have a historical society in Waterloo, Iowa. Black Hawk County doesn't have a historical society. So a lot of times what a historical society does is partners with the Preservation Commission. So the Waterloo Historical Preservation Commission, if it doesn't have, oh, I'm sorry. If the Waterloo Historical Preservation Commission doesn't have a historical society to collaborate with, a lot of the significance in the history of our city, it's not there. It's like, it's like we really don't exist. Two, when it comes to Black Waterloo, I think we have to be identified as being existed. Our black community doesn't have a name, it doesn't have a title. If you, I've been working with the Iowa Bicycle Coalition and they're very interested in connecting our African-American community with other African-American communities across the state of Iowa. I think the other part of it is, if you guys are going to have a 30-year plan, you have to have an individual plan that's created by the black community. I think if the black community has its own plan that could be part of the city's comprehensive plan, you could take the next steps. I think if the city has its own individual planning processes, if you look over the years, like they had a millennial plan back in the roof days, it was kind of inclusive to the needs of the African-American community, but they never implemented what had to take place when it came to the planning. So if you're going to have a 30-year plan, to me personally, you have to have an inventory of the community's African-American historical resources. You also have to have a relationship with your certified local government program. And I think a bigger one is using people like Paul Hudding or Public Works to just connect people through trail enhancement, through trail development. It don't always have to be about property. It also could be about outdoor recreation. So me being a native of Waterloo, I have my own consulting firm, Pearson Consulting. I'm an African-American historical resource consultant around the state of Iowa. So just like what Quentin said, us being on the 24/7 Wall Street report, not just for the past year, we've been on that report for like almost 10 years. So it doesn't matter if we're number one on the report or if we're number 50 on the report, we're still on the report. And the other thing is, if you look at your event that you're having today, you really don't have no representation from the community. It's pretty much the city.
So what I did, I made two separate chairs, right? Black, one white specifically to target. So today is just staff and city council, but we're having other meetings.
Oh, no, I'm done.
You're the only one.
I'm done.
This is just this one. So I just want you to know.
No, no, I'm done. I was just saying.
I'll give you about 20, 30 more seconds, sir.
Yep, I think if you're going to have a plan, you need an expert like myself that could walk you through how we could do a plan for a diverse community, right? And then I think as consultants, just like they did the Smokey Roll survey, the city paid $50,000 for the survey, right? But they never actually use the survey for other projects. It's like they did the survey and it just stopped.
So Mr. Pearson, we getting to the weeds, big picture.
I'm done, I'm done.
Thank you so much, sir.
I want to go back to trails for a minute, just because that can often be a major game changer for cities. And I know that just so much has been done to connect trails, but there was some talk a little bit about how we connect different pieces of the community together. Does anybody want to, does anybody have any thoughts on that, that they want to add into that piece of it?
I just, one of the things that I had was like a riverwalk area. You know, we've got this nice area, we would talk about, you know, we're going to have a marina soon, some other things. And just kind of connect it that way would be great. It would be a nice way to connect both sides of the river, the eateries and things. And we have some buildings that could use some revitalization, turn into restaurants. I know Austin was mentioned, San Antonio, you know, I'm thinking Milwaukee as well. Those kinds of areas are just, you've got that multi-use where you have, as you walk, you know, you have some parks, you have some mixed-use areas, you know, with commercial and residential. I think we can enhance some of that as well. And then, you know, we don't want to have that donut here in the middle with a non-vibrant downtown and I think that would kind of, you know, bring some cohesion to it as well.
Anything else on trails? It's one that comes up in pretty much every community, but I think every community always has room for improvement on trails and connectivity. Okay. So we have about 15 minutes left. We said we'd take about 90 minutes of your time and I want to be really respectful of that tonight. This is kind of the opportunity to get a couple, like, and I want to think about what are, how do we turn some of these things into big ideas? And it's okay if you don't have those thoughts tonight. We're going to give you an opportunity to submit those beyond just the survey, just sort of that, you know, you walk out of here and you're like, oh my gosh, why didn't I, why didn't I think of that? But I do want to give you guys the opportunity to talk about any things that are coming to mind here after all this discussion tonight. You know, the things that keep coming, that keep coming to the top, certainly trails came Say that again?
Broadband.
Broadband came up. And it's interesting, like, I need to have a better understanding of where you guys are at with the program that you're in.
How do we prioritize this list? Because you've just got a bunch up there. How does it get prioritized by the community?
So the community survey helps us to prioritize some of that, but it also has to be able to be mapped to resources, right? So if you don't have community partners that are willing to say, hey, I want to take the lead alongside the city on this type of project, you know, once we kind of have a working list, you'd be surprised, there are a lot of ideas, but they kind of, a lot of them go together and they can kind of be shaped together into a project or a goal in and of itself. So, you know, it's interesting, I mean, you can even, some communities tie in childcare with their schools and they figure out ways to train people through their community colleges while providing childcare, training them in early childhood education. So it's looking at everything together and kind of seeing where some things can connect. The idea here isn't to come up with, you know, 10 super expensive projects for the city to do, right? Also, I don't want any department heads to be having a heart attack tonight thinking, oh my gosh, we have to do all this ourselves, right? We are looking for those community partners to step into some of this and as we continue to have the community conversations and we say, okay, these are the things that have really risen to the top. And some of it's applying our own creativity and experience to it too. How can we shape it a little bit more and give it boundaries and a specific path to follow? So.
So can I, in the last 15 minutes, can I ask you just a question for where you're going? So, you know, it's like when you take a look 20 years, you know, are you also looking for things like that Waterloo will be connected from Iowa City or to Des Moines to Chicago via rail for accessibility? Waterloo has a space needle. Like, are you looking things that, you know, all-encompassing, getting people excited about? And then these things would be, like, you know, when we talk about neighborhoods and redevelopment and, you know, Mr. Pearson mentioned, you know, this level of study helps you get to that particular point, but do you want us to be out here or like where you want us?
So I think you need ideas at all levels to be able to come up with the things that are going to make a difference for this community. And you kind of put 10 years out there as completing projects within 10 years, like transformational change. So transformational change comes by doing projects that fit the community, but also really enhance the community. The community needs them. It's necessity is the mother of invention, right? I mean, we could say, you joked about space needle there, Waterloo doesn't need a space needle. But what does Waterloo need that people would embrace and be a part of, that would change things, that would address things like inequity, that would address things like crime, that will make an impact on this community, that will change the way people think about this community in 10, 20, and 30 years? And that's what we're looking for. So when we look at this big, long list, and that's not even as long as what came out of the stakeholders meeting, but it is, there are a lot of them that are parallel to it. That's where we start seeing the patterns of need in a community and that's where we start forming those goals around that. So that's how we prioritize and start to shape things.
But every idea that was suggested tonight is supposed to be on that list up there, right?
Yeah, we're getting there. We're writing a lot of notes. Some of it's in here, some of it's.
Okay, so some of it might be added after tonight.
Yep.
Of course. Yeah. So, for the council number adding, like, we wrote down their list too, but it's great to have, I see them being populated as we go, but it matches my numbers. It matches my numbers, so we're taking notes of that for the conversation as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Department heads, not to put you on the spot, but anything in here that is spurring any
They normally talk more than this.
I know.
Can you guess from these who might have put some of these things out there?
Sure. We're, in this city, we're about to begin a parallel process with another consultant to try to come up with the best possible plan to build new outdoor aquatic facilities. We have a couple of old pools in Waterloo that are, we're continuing to patch them together and so forth, but since you asked and everybody else is so shy, we're really excited to, mid-April, to be starting that process and going out to the community and trying to find a way to raise probably 12 million or thereabouts. So we're excited about that and hope it fits with this larger plan.
You know, the Midwest is such a great place for recreation and sports and I've been like banging this drum for a long time, that recreation is a thing we have here. Particularly youth sports are such an opportunity. So when you think about that and when you dream about that, what do you dream of that's very different than what, you know, the Marshalltown YMCA has? Well, you said outdoor for one thing, but.
Well, the Marshalltown YMCA is great and there are certain things we're going to want to probably copy, but we're wanting to kind of thread the needle between not duplicating probably the biggest and one of the best water parks in the state of the Midwest, which happens to be in Waterloo. And then what we want to do is to provide the neighborhood recreation for our residents and the aquatics lessons, swim lessons. We want to teach this community to swim and that's been kind of a real challenge over the years as schools have shifted their aquatics programs and so forth. So this isn't so much, although we want it to be cool, it isn't so much a lost island as it is a great place for neighbors to come and.
So Waterloo becomes the aquatics capital of the Midwest. So, Waterloo becomes the aquatics capital of the Midwest?
Well, at least the vice capital.
Why not?
No, we would like to do that, but we definitely have needs there, so. So, that took the whole 15 minutes, so. Sorry, I know the rest of these people really wanted to talk.
I'd like to piggyback on that. I have seven kids, six of whom live local, and I have 22 grandchildren, 19 of which live local. And a bunch of them went up to the Wisconsin Dells, and I want to put a stop to that.
That's right. Bring Margaret's grandkids here. Bring them home. You know, that's a great point, is that it's such a, things like that provide such positive activities for kids. And when you're thinking about attracting young families, like that, that's all the stuff that goes into the mix of a master plan with trails and recreation, aquatics, and, you know, you've got Lost Island. And there are so many opportunities to tie that together into one very attractive package because, and also, kids who swim sleep really well at night, as your kids probably know. Yeah, absolutely. I like that. Anything else?
Yes.
Yes. You don't have to stay in that forever, so you're not trapped.
Any other department heads, you've kind of looked out and seen what the future holds. You talk to other communities all the time. Is there something out there that you believe that separates us or pushes us to an incredible level? Guess we're already there.
All right. So, that one last thing is that we'll send, it's a one-question survey, and it's basically titled, "I Forgot to Say This." So, if you've got some additional thoughts or questions, we wrote down everything. Ryan was writing as fast as he could. I was writing as fast as I could. This is recorded. We've got it. But if there was something that you forgot to say or a way that you wanted to say it, that's your opportunity. Show of hands, have you taken the community survey? Okay.
There's still time if you haven't, so don't worry.
Yep. So, then, I want to just put in one last plug for the Spark event. So, you know, as Jill described-
Any fan?
Yes.
Yeah, just Pat Morrissey did. Can I just send those 21 things to you on that prior question's response?
I think they're in there.
To that?
Yep, we've got them. But you can also put them on that response as well.
And submit it, and it'll get to you.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, one last thing on the Spark event. The Spark event is where we want to see ideas come together that are kind of like becoming the aquatics capital of the Midwest, right? That's where we want to hear people's ideas, whether it's you or somebody that you talk to who shooed on you and says, you know what you should do? Well, this is a great thing. Send them the Spark survey. Tell them to submit that idea to us. We will have to choose probably no more than 10 presenters that night. A couple of them will be stories about Waterloo, but the rest of them will be ideas for Waterloo. And then, we work with them to make sure that they feel really prepared to present their idea and that they've got a presentation ready to go. We also help them kind of refine it a little bit if they're like, well, it's just kind of a loose idea. But please share that Spark survey far and wide with people that you know that have creative ideas for the future of Waterloo or just love Waterloo and want to see it succeed. So, I want to thank you for your time this Monday night. I really appreciated all the energy and the ideas. Thank you so much, and have a wonderful night.
And I want to thank you, Jen, and Jill, and Rand. Thank you so much for being here. Thanks, city council, all our staff and team members, and those that we have collected in the audience. Well, we have a ways to go. If you do have social media, could you please invite people to complete the 2030 survey that's on there? Please do that. Encourage people to get out and do that. I think we're close to about 2,000 or so, but it would be great to have another 1,000, 2,000 people out there giving their ideas. It's more, let's really make them work by bringing all this together and collecting these ideas. So, thank you all for being here.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion to adjourn with a second, all in favor?
All right.
We adjourn. Thank you.